Forum of the Board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of August 8, 2017 is called to order. First item is approval of the agenda and order of priority. Is there a motion?
No moves.
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. There is an informational folder item in front of you, information on the 2015-16 Carl D. Perkins Consolidated Annual Report. No action is required on that, but it is a report in your file. Next, we move to introduction of State Board of Education members and guests. Marilyn, at this time, will you please introduce the board?
Yes. The State Superintendent Brian Wiston is chairman of the board. He's the one who's just been speaking. And as we go around the table, Richard Zyley is one of the co-presidents of the board, and he resides in Dearborn. The other co-president of the board, Cassandra Alberch, resides in Rochester Hills. Michelle Fecta will be at the table momentarily. She's from Detroit, and she's the secretary of the board. Nikki Snyder is from Dexter now, right Nikki? Recently made a move there, still in the same vicinity that she was in Pinckney. And she is the board's NASB delegate, that's their association. And the first time officially at the table, Luke Wilcox. He's this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year. And he's a high school mathematics teacher in East Kentwood High School, which is in the Greater Grand Rapids area. And we go across the table, Tyler Sawyer. He represents the governor. He is the senior advisor for education and career connections. And next to him is Eileen Weiser. She's the State Board of Education member from Ann Arbor. Lupe Ramos Montini is a board member from Grand Rapids. And Pamela Pugh is on her way. She's board member from Saginaw. And next to me is the board's treasurer, Tom McMillan, and he's from Rochester Hills. I'm Marilyn Schneider. I'm the State Board Executive.
Thank you, Marilyn. Now we'll go to introduction of new employees. Kyle, please.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce Brenda Royce with the Office of School Support Services. Do you want to stand up and tell them a little bit about yourself and your role here at the department?
Sure. My name's Brenda Royce. I've been with the state of Michigan for 18 years. Most of that part-time has been with the state police. And then I transferred to MDEHS, and now I'm here. And I work for Kevin's group in the grant coordination and school support. And I have about 15 years of grant, electronic grant management system experience, so I'm glad to be here.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to introduce Kathy Kaczynski from the Library of Michigan.
Hi. I worked in statewide library services over at the Library of Michigan. Essentially, I'm an analyst looking to make sure that the programs we offer are succeeding at both libraries all across the state. Before this, I worked at the University of Michigan Library, and I still live in Ann Arbor, so.
We like that. Yeah. Quiet. Need a gallery, be quiet. All set, Kyle? All right, Vanessa, please.
Good morning. Sorry. So, we have several new employees. We'll start with Joe Priest from Office of Educator Talent.
My name is Joe Priest. I come from the K-12 setting. I was a teacher, instructional coach, assistant principal, and principal, most recently principal in Hastings. And I come to MDE to work as an education consultant around educator evaluations, helping to help all educators use those systems to improve our practices for our students. So, very happy to be here.
And then from our Office of Professional Preparation Services, we have actually several student assistants who've been helping us give excellent customer service to all of our teachers who need help with their certificate approvals and things like that. I'm just going to let you all stand up one at a time and introduce yourselves, rather than me reading your names and repeating them. So, we start at the end, or wherever you start, wherever you want.
Hello. My name is Isaiah Roberts from Grand Ledge, and I assist with MOX support emails and the separation of different status of the applications. And I recently became a credit card processor company.
My name is Tabitha Barber. I do most of the same things that he does. As well, I came from Portland, Michigan, which is near him.
My name is Ebony. I do everything they do, but more.
I was temporarily employed, now I'm a student assistant.
And I'm Brayden Walters. The same thing as the other three, support emails, documents, and helping people with MOX. And I'm actually from LaPierre, Michigan.
Very good. All right, thank.
Just a little bit more context on this unit. The Office of Professional Preparation receives sometimes over 10,000, 15,000 calls a month. They service 200,000 educators with certificates. So, Leah Breen, director of that office, was trying to figure out how to even increase our customer service even more, and we hit upon this rotating student assistant core. So, they really, we have a nice little room set up, and they really, it's hard work, you know, to be on the phones all day and help people who are stressed and worried, and they're really doing an excellent job. So, we appreciate that innovative solution and their efforts.
All right. Representing Susan Bowman is Shalan.
Shalan Doxy, Special Assistant to Deputy Superintendent Susan Bowman. On behalf of Deputy Superintendent Bowman, I'd like to introduce Noah Kouti from our Early Childhood Development and Family Engagement Office. Noah?
Good morning. Thank you for the introduction. Glad to be here. Yes, I'm from the Office of Great Start, Office of Early Childhood Development and Family Education. My position is Early Literacy and Family Engagement Specialist. So, it's a new job, a new challenge. My job is to collect research and disseminate best practices for authentically engaging families and improving literacy. I'm admitted to goal number five in MDE's Top 10 &amp; 10, goals and strategies to ensure that parents and guardians are engaged and supported partners in their child's education. Prior to this position, I was the Director of Early Childhood for Saginaw Intermediate School District. So, I oversaw pretty much all early childhood programs in the Office of Great Start within Saginaw ISD, including Head Start, GSRP, Great Start Collaboratives, Great Start Quality Resource Centers, and several home visiting programs. And I'm thankful for the opportunity. Thanks.
All right. Did we miss any new employees? All right, let's welcome the new employees to the team. Now, we'd ask audience members to introduce themselves, starting with Marty, please.
Oh, hey. I'm Marty Ackley. I'm the Director of Public, in the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs here at the Department of Education.
Caroline Leithan, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Education.
Deputy Superintendent Michigan Association School Board.
David Clark, Business Development, Pearson Education.
Terrence Longer, Superintendent at the Calvin Intermediate School District.
Kevin Walters, Supervisor of Rights Coordination and School Support.
Director of Governmental Affairs.
Steve Best, Strategic Planning and Analysis.
Good morning. Heather Knopf, representing our department.
Hi, Lori Tuckteagan, Speech and Language Pathologist, and I'm here representing the Special Advisor Advisory Committee and also the Michigan Speech, Language, and Hearing Association.
Joel Cole, Office of Parental Educational, MDE.
Allison Henry here in the superintendent's office at MDE.
Vanessa Kiefler, Deputy Superintendent, Division of Educators, Student, and School Sports.
Good morning. Kyle Garand, Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations.
Shalan Doxy, Special Assistant to Deputy Superintendent Susan Bowman.
Good morning.
Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent.
Wendy Larvik, Chief of Staff, the Superintendent Wiston.
Richard.
Richard Law, Director of Preschool and Hospital Time Learning in the Office of Great Start.
Thank you for those introductions. If you plan to offer public comment at today's meeting, please complete a form and get it to Marilyn. Forms are available on the table just outside the boardroom, and they must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. Public comment will begin immediately following the lunch break, scheduled for approximately 1:00 p.m. today. Please be here at that time to make sure you have the opportunity to provide comment. We now move to discussion items. First item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation on the 2016-17 Michigan Department of Education Annual Review. This is year two of providing the board and the community an annual review of the things that the department worked on over the previous year. The presentation will be done by Chief Deputy Sheila Alice, and I think she has others that will be joining her. I want to thank the team for their good work in putting this together, highlighting the good work that the department is doing to help Michigan become a top-10 state. With that, Sheila, please.
Thank you for that introduction. Good morning, everyone. I'm very pleased to share with you the 2016-17 Annual Review. Every public school and district across the state has a similar report called their Annual Education Report, and they present their reports to their constituents at a public meeting in the fall of each year. Just like the Annual Education Report, MDE's Annual Review is an opportunity for us to share with you, with those who are in the audience today, others watching as we livestream, and those who have access to the electronic version on the MDE website, a snapshot of the work of the Michigan Department of Ed during the past year, as well as the metrics that will provide data that reflects our effort to achieve our goal of becoming a top-10 &amp; 10 education state in the next 10 years. Think about the Annual Review as a piece of literary work. It's just as important to read the narrative and work through the plot as it is to know the conclusion or the end results. Actions and outputs tell the work aimed at the Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Plan, and they also describe the work of the Michigan Department of Ed staff and the tangible products that were produced through these efforts. The MDE staff were engaged in a tremendous amount of work during the 2017-18 year. We are not able to capture all of that work in the Annual Review. Only some of the essential efforts and initiatives have been included. So, this morning, I'm going to walk you through this report, pointing out some of the many elements contained in it. While I am leading this presentation, my deputy superintendent friends, Kyle and Vanessa, are joining me at the table. Deputy Superintendent Susan Bowman is not here today, as she is attending an awards ceremony for one of her staff members in Traverse City. So, joining me this morning is Shalan Doxy, who is filling in for Susan. We're glad to have all of them with us this morning. And helping me with my PowerPoint presentation is Allison Henry. At the conclusion of today's presentation, we would be happy to hear your feedback and respond to your questions. We're asking for the delay in that so that we have ample time to get through today's presentation, because it is a quite lengthy presentation, as there's much information to share with you today. This is MDE's second Annual Review, as Superintendent Wiston mentioned. You'll notice it's significantly different from last year's report. This year's report is designed to reflect MDE's major efforts on the Top 10 &amp; 10 and the metrics that we're going to use to measure our progress. This report is divided into three sections. The narrative, that describes our efforts and our work with our external partners; the metrics, which provides the data for measuring our products, which is also supplemented by the appendix in the Annual Review; and then additional pertinent ancillary information. Additionally, the electronic version of the report contains many hyperlinks. Those are indicated in blue italicized text in the printed version. These hyperlinks lead to additional details and background information about the work described in the report. The electronic version can be downloaded through today's meeting agenda or on the MDE website, www.michigan.gov/MDE. So, let's begin by diving into the Annual Review, beginning with the narrative section. That starts with a letter from our superintendent, Brian Wiston, to Michigan stakeholders, and it summarizes the work of the Michigan Department of Ed and the contents of this report. Moving on to pages one and two, we have a summary, which is an executive summary of the contents of this report. Moving on to page three, this includes Michigan's vision statement from our Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Plan. A vision statement provides us with a description of what we hope to become. In Michigan, our education vision is that every learner in Michigan's public schools will have an inspiring, engaging, and caring learning environment that fosters creative and critical thinkers who believe in their ability to positively influence Michigan and the world beyond. Page three also includes Michigan's education mission. This is also from our strategic plan. A mission statement provides the purpose for why we exist. It answers the question, why are we here? Our mission statement is to support learning and learners. Page three also lists four guiding principles, which are from the strategic plan. In addition, our strategic plan includes seven goals, which are listed on page four, as well as on this slide. By now, you should be familiar with these seven goals, because you have seen them repeatedly in previous presentations to our board on the Top 10 &amp; 10. Our strategic plan also includes 44 strategies. Those 44 strategies interface and support the goals. I'm sure that this graphic representation is now familiar to you as well, because it has been in previous presentations. It was created to help organize the seven goals and 44 strategies. It has four focus areas: learner-centered supports, effective education workforce, strategic partnerships, and then in the center, systemic infrastructures. This graphic representation is found on page five, along with a descriptor of each of the focus areas. Page five also includes a brief explanation of the Governor's 21st Century Education Commission Report. This report was created by a 25-member commission using input gathered from online opportunities and stakeholder input sessions. It includes four goals and 32 principles that form recommendations to ensure that a high-quality education is available for all students prenatal through 20, more commonly known as P-20. The development of our Top 10 &amp; 10 Plan and the development of the Governor's 21st Century Education Commission Report used two independent processes about a year apart. However, both documents have a 90% alignment between the two of them. Pages six through 24 provide examples of the initiatives and the efforts to implement the Top 10 &amp; 10 Strategic Plan in each of the four focus areas. The information contained in these pages is illustrative of the work done at MDE, but certainly does not capture the depth and breadth of all of our efforts. As I cover these pages, I'm going to do four things. I will introduce each focus area, provide a brief explanation of the components that are in each focus area, give an example of the components, and then what I'm going to do is highlight just one MDE initiative that's included in this report. So, beginning with learner-centered supports. To support learning, the educational system needs to develop quality systems around a variety of key components, with the five main ones included in this area. So, we'll go through each of them, beginning with deeper learning, which is on page six. Deeper learning pertains to learning about content and skills that go beyond the recall level, and students are learning at a critical thinking level, a problem-solving level, and then are working with that content to apply it to real-world situations. Examples of deeper learning include AP classes, IB programs, STEM and STEAM programs, and the science and engineering standards that are part of our Michigan Science Standards. In this area, MDE has begun aligning our work around this component with much more planned for the 17-18 year, including the formation of a steering committee that will be comprised of external and internal representation. The committee will provide guidance on how best to assist schools in developing programs that allow students to dig deeply into the subject area and to apply the knowledge and skills gained in the subject area to real-world situations. The next component is personalized learning, also on page six, which is individualized to the learning styles and the interests of the student. It allows multiple pathways for a student to demonstrate that they have met their learning outcomes. Examples include dual enrollment, competency-based learning, early and middle college, as well as online and blended learning. In this area, MDE has partnered with MAISA and its General Education Leadership Network to work on ways to support schools and districts with the implementation of competency-based learning, which is one example of personalized learning. The partnership was formed earlier this year to implement a pilot project that was outlined in this year's budget bill. The pilot project will be competitive. It'll be open to all schools in Michigan and have a three-year funding commitment from our legislators. It will allow us to support districts interested in beginning this work. Criteria is being formalized to bring to you for approval, and a draft application process is in the works. Additionally, we are working with MAISA to build a network of interested school districts to explore competency-based learning, what it involves, and what it takes to move a district forward in this initiative. Moving on to page seven, and differentiated supports. Differentiated supports acknowledges the diversity of the learning needs and the challenges of each learner, and it provides individualized supports to support those students as needed. Examples of this include multi-tiered systems of support, otherwise known as MTSS, as well as interventions that support students that have special needs. For this component, MDE has partnered with three ISDs for the implementation of MTSS. We have partnered with Lenaway and Saginaw ISD to scale up the efforts of MTSS with three local districts in each of those ISDs. And we are partnering with Ingham ISD to share and learn from each other as we move forward with our implementation of MTSS. Moving on to page eight. Page eight provides examples of aligned curriculum efforts. Aligned curriculum provides a coherent and a developmentally appropriate learning sequence that addresses quality learning standards. Examples of this include the tight alignment between curriculum, instruction, and assessment, because we know the tighter those three components are aligned, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, the more successful students are in the classroom. Another example is evidence-based practices that are used during the instructional component of the lesson design. MDE is continuing its effort to provide support to schools and districts as they implement the new science standards that were adopted by the State Board of Education in November 2015, and we are finalizing draft social studies standards, which we plan to bring to the State Board for your review and approval later this year. And the final component in the focus area, this focus area, is feedback, which is included on pages eight and nine. Feedback provides information for each learner that will help adapt learning approaches and understandings in order to improve the learning outcomes. Examples of this include formative assessment and mentoring and coaching. The department has been working with a group of stakeholders to create a feedback framework, and now is in the process of identifying scenarios for use with various feedback groups. The next step in the implementation process is to acquaint all of the MDE staff with this feedback framework, and we have that planned for next month. We also plan to bring this initiative to our partners across the state during the coming year for their input as we develop a statewide implementation plan. Moving on to the next focus area, which is effective education workforce, and that begins on page nine. Michigan recognizes that the primary support for student learning is the educator, and that we cannot build a quality education system without having an effective education workforce that is well-prepared and supported. The first component in this area is the development of new educators and leaders, which focuses on the ongoing efforts to develop the educator pipeline, to ensure that quality educators are entering the profession, and that they have the competencies needed to be effective in the field. Examples of this include high-quality placement for pre-service teachers and high-quality mentors for new teachers and administrators. Several major educator effectiveness initiatives related to new educators were carried out this year by the Michigan Department of Education staff, including research and implementing several residency-based clinical programs in partnership with education preparation programs and the K-12 system. The next component is supporting. Support for practicing educators and leaders, which is with details provided on pages 10 and 11. We know that the role of the educator is developed and improved over time through the experiences and the professional learning opportunities that they have. Examples of this include professional learning opportunities and programs that are aligned to Michigan standards for professional learning. In September of 2016, MDE launched the Proud Michigan Educator Campaign, designed to support the prestige of the education profession by recognizing the incredible efforts of educators across the state and by contributing to the improvements in educator morale and retention. Eight video vignettes recognizing educators were released this past year, and we have three more videos planned for release shortly. The final component in this focus area is equity across the system, as indicated on page 12. Equity ensures that all learners have equal access to quality educators and that educators have the appropriate support, resources, and work environment that they need to teach their students. Examples of this include the attraction and retention of quality educators and being able to provide incentives for becoming a master teacher. Through our partnership district model, MDE has teamed and is working with individuals within the nine partnership districts to identify talent management needs and to craft individual solutions, so that these districts that have the greatest needs have access to the greatest supports, including access to the best educators. For the coming year, we plan to begin the process of defining equity and what equitable access means. Moving on to the next focus area, which is strategic partnership, beginning on page 12. Michigan's educational infrastructure is not relegated to just schools and leaders and teachers, but rather includes a variety of stakeholders who need to collaborate with and support our children. The first component is district partnerships, which is included on page 12. MDE is partnering with school districts to support challenges they face in implementing initiatives with fidelity and to learn how better to serve them. Examples of this include the partnership district model and MDE's collaborative efforts with Lenaway, Saginaw, and Ingham ISD to implement evidence-based practices such as MTSS. This past spring, MDE initiated a partnership model designed to support the districts with persistently low-performing schools. This model helps districts draw on an array of technical assistance, expertise, and resources, and it partners with stakeholders to improve schools. This model also calls for each district to develop a partnership agreement and to take the lead in developing, implementing, and evaluating the goals, the benchmarks, the strategies, and activities included in their agreement. MDE liaisons and cross-office experts provide continuous support to ensure district success. The next component in this focus area is parent, family, and community services, which is on pages 14 and 16. This includes collaborations with individuals and organizations that support the whole child. Examples include PTA's National Standards for Family-School Partnership, as well as access to free human services and family advocacy supports. This past year, MDE has been working with local, state, and federal partners to support the children and families of Flint as part of the ongoing efforts to address the challenges brought on by the Flint water emergency, such as expanding child development and care access, providing an improved summer food service program to reach more children, and partnering with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to provide additional food assistance for families affected by the emergency. Also on page 16 is post-secondary higher education access, another component of this focus area. It includes partnerships with institutions that support educator development and are the transitional stage in learning for those leaving the prenatal through 12th grade system. Examples include early college, middle college programs, articulation agreements between colleges and career and technical education programs, otherwise known as CTE. The Michigan Department of Ed Head Start State Collaborative Office provides continual leadership for Michigan's early EDU team, which focuses on providing high-quality online literacy degrees to early childhood workforce. This past year, Mott Community College created an online child development associate credential and enrolled a cohort of high school students in this program. This cohort of students received their child development associate credential as well as college credit before graduating from high school. Also on page 17 is workforce preparation. This is the final component in this focus area, and it includes partnerships that support the transition of learners from the classroom into the workforce. Examples include work-based learning and service learning for students, as well as CTE programs. Both the Governor's Office and our State Superintendent have been promoting CTE instruction as a viable instructional option for all Michigan students. Additionally, at the end of June, our superintendent signed an executive directive on alignment of CTE coursework, standards, and curricula at the local district level. In the coming year, department staff and the Office of Career and Technical Education and the Office of Education Improvements and Innovations will be working with CTE and the Office of Education Improvements and Innovations will be working with CTE centers and districts to ensure that the work done in the CTE centers is applicable to meeting graduation requirements. Pages 18 and 19 include additional partnerships MDE has with other state agencies and external organizations. Moving on to the fourth focus area, which is systemic infrastructure, which begins on page 19 and continues through page 24. All systems need an infrastructure to run. Stakeholders told MDE during the input sessions that led to the development of our top 10 and 10 strategic plan that improvements were needed in the infrastructure system beginning from the building and classroom level right through to the State Education Agency. One of the components in the focus area is governance, found on page 20. It includes protocols and decision-making practices using data and other relevant information and aligned with other initiatives. To make this happen, we needed a systemic way to bring our work forward in MDE. Thus, way of work, as reflected in this graphic, was created. It is a critical piece of reorganization, as it helps to build a system of cross-office collaboration for doing our work. It includes considerations such as defined effort, resources, communication, data and evaluation, and professional learning and technical assistance. The four outer considerations interface with the defined effort, as well as each other, as depicted in this graphic. Work groups have been established for each of these four way of work considerations. The work groups are in the process of developing processes, protocols, and procedures to bring coherence, consistency, and structure to each of these considerations. Once the work groups have developed the new tools and practices for their consideration, they will share them with all of the MDE staff, and support in implementing them will be provided. There are additional way of work components that are included on pages 21 through 24. However, for the sake of time, I'm not going to cover the remaining ones, except to say that they represent a specific system within the organization's infrastructure. This concludes the narrative portion of the presentation. I'll now move to the metrics portion, which begins on page 25. Implementation of the strategic plan included identifying metrics to measure our progress. Currently, we have six metrics, otherwise known as the six Es, which are listed on this slide. As we continue to refine our implementation efforts, it's also probable that we will revise our metrics. They will evolve as we evolve in the implementation of our strategic plan. The data that is presented in our report this year is our baseline data. As we go forward, we will add results in the coming years for comparison purposes that will help us measure our progress over time. There are two types of data sets. They are listed on the bottom of page 25. They include state-to-state comparison data and then state-to-state and local data. As I review the metrics portion of the report, I'm going to do the same thing as I did with the narrative portion, which is I'll identify each metric, I'll list the data available, and then I will point out only two of the metrics. Page 26 includes the first E, which is the early learning metrics. We know that early learning can be difficult to measure, so we've identified three major areas for this metric. The early learning access, student engagement in early grades, as well as early literacy and mathematics proficiency on the M-Step for third grade, and the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP, for fourth grade. In this area, I'm going to highlight the student engagement data set. For this metric, we're using an overall student attendance in kindergarten through third grade, which was 94.2% during the 2015-16 school year. At the same time, we're monitoring students who are chronically absent, which is defined as being absent 10% or more days of school. For 2015-16, the number is 14.4%, or almost one of seven students who were chronically absent. Moving on to student proficiency, we're looking at third-grade M-Step for English Language Arts, or ELA, and math results for the 2015 school year, which is the most recent data that we have. For ELA, the proficiency average was 46% for 2015-16, and for math, it was 45.2% for the same year. Moving on to the second E, which is exit ready, on page 27. For this area, our focus is on opportunities and outcomes for students who are transitioning to a career or college after high school. We have three data sets we're looking at. We're looking at national student assessments. It's the eighth-grade NAEP for reading and mathematics and the SAT results for 11th graders. We're also looking at high school graduation rates and CTE completion rates. Today, I'll highlight our baseline data for CTE completers, which is 37,143 students for the 2015-16 school year. And I'll also highlight our SAT scores for 2016, which includes a combined average of 1,001, and that uses the results from the math and the evidence-based reading plus writing scores. Our average math score for 2016 was 494, and our average reading/writing score was 507. The next E is engagement, on page 28. For this area, we're using the underlying principle, the underlying principle, that a student must be fully engaged and present in the learning environment in order to be successful. We've identified two data sets for engagement. Our first data set is attendance and absenteeism. That's for kindergarten through 12th grade. Here, our baseline data indicates that 14% of the student group was absent 10% or more days of school during the 2015-16 school year. Our second data set is college enrollment for high school students who graduate and then enroll in college within one year of graduation. Our baseline data reflects that 69.6% of our high school grads in 2015 enrolled in a college within one year of their high school graduation. Measuring our progress for the next E, effective educators, is on page 29. Here, we're using two data sets, one for outcomes, which is based on the results of educator evaluation, and one for inputs, such as the number of individuals in a specific field. For educator evaluation, 98% of our teachers were rated either effective or highly effective during the 2015-16 school year, and 97% of our state's administrators were also rated either effective or highly effective during the same year. Moving on to early literacy coaches, the early literacy funds were used to provide 95 literacy coaches at our ISDs and 802 literacy coaches at this district level this past year. The fifth E is equity, on page 29, and carries over to page 30. For these metrics, we're doing a deeper analysis of metrics used to recognize potential inequities in resources and supports, as well as to identify achievement gaps in student proficiency. Here, we have two data sets. The analysis of systems inputs using ratings from two external groups, Education Week and the Annie E. Casey Foundation, and the analysis of subgroup outcomes on our state assessments, both M-Step and SAT. Looking at the Education Week 2017 Quality Counts Report, Michigan ranks 34th when compared to other states based on multiple factors, including early foundations, academic measures, and adult outcomes. The annual review also includes an appendix in which we provide subgroup proficiency results by grade and content area tested for both the M-Step, grades three through eight, and the SAT for 11th grade. And our final E is efficacy, which is listed on page 30. Efficacy metrics allow us to evaluate the effectiveness of implementing systems and programs to determine if the implementation of that program or initiative was done with fidelity, and we do this by examining diagnostic, operational, and benchmark metrics during the course of implementation. For the 16-17 school year, we do not have any baseline data. However, it is our plan that our team that is implementing MTSS to collect data points along the way throughout the coming year that will measure the fidelity of implementing MTSS in the districts that have been selected by Saginaw and by Lenawee to determine the effectiveness of that implementation process. This concludes the metrics portion of the presentation of our annual review document. We'll now move into the final section, which is additional pertinent information. Pages 31 and 32 of the report describe Michigan's plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act and the process that was used in the development over this past year. Michigan's ESA Plan was developed with the input of thousands of Michigan stakeholders through their participation on action teams, advisories, and review committees, responses to multiple online surveys, attendance at regional feedback forums or presentations, and as part of the formal public comment process. Michigan's ESA Plan is aligned to the state's top 10 and 10 strategies and goals. Our plan was submitted to the U.S. Department of Ed this past spring. It was reviewed, and feedback was recently provided by the U.S. Department of Ed. We are currently in the process of providing additional details to the plan based on the feedback that we received, and we plan to submit our updated ESA Plan to the Department of Ed by the end of this month. Pages 33 and 35 provide selected facts and figures related to Michigan's education system. These include the number of students, schools, and districts in our state, educational funding, class size, as well as data related to student testing, CTE and early childhood programs, along with school and summer meal programs. Pages 35 and 36 of the report provide examples of the positive feedback, just some of the positive feedback the district has received over the year, as well as highlights of our outreach efforts in certain areas. Customer service continues to be a top priority for MDE. Page 37 highlights someone that you are all familiar with, the 2016-17 Teacher of the Year, Tracy Hordisky. Details of the Michigan Teacher of the Year program and a link to Tracy's blog featuring highlights of her experiences over the past year are included. Members of the State Board of Education and a list of board actions taken this past year are listed on pages 39 and 40. Reference information provided in the last several pages of the report include a list of legislative actions impacting the state's education system enacted this year, a list of some of the most recently accessed MDE-hosted or sponsored webpages, and a list of the MDE leadership team with links to their content information, contact information in the electronic version of the report. The appendix of the annual review contains the most recent proficiency and growth data across all subjects tested for all grades and subgroup areas. The creation of the 2016-17 annual review was truly a collaborative effort. Many MDE staff played a role in the development of it, and I'd like to acknowledge and thank the staff who contributed to the content, the text, and the data for inclusion in the report, the others who proofread and reviewed this document. Allison Henry for coordinating and organizing the content, Shannon Velasis for formatting the layout and the graphic design, and Mike Flamignio for developing the slides for today's PowerPoint presentation. I'd also like to recognize the leadership of the State Board of Education, as well as our Superintendent, for their ongoing encouragement, support, and endorsement of our top 10 and 10 strategic plan and all of the efforts surrounding the work that we do at MDE. And there are many, many staff whose work, whose efforts, and contributions were included in this report. As I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, it's not possible to include in this report all of the work on the top 10 and 10 conducted at the MDE. There's just too much of it, therefore, we chose to select and share initiatives and efforts that represent the different offices and units within our agency. We're very proud of the strides that we made this year towards achieving and moving us forward in the top 10 and 10 strategic plan. We also know that we are looking forward to moving our state closer to becoming a top 10 and 10 education state in the next year with our efforts that we have planned. We thank you for this opportunity to share with you the many highlights that are included in our report, and we would be happy to listen to any feedback that you have or respond to questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments from the board? Eileen, please, and then Cassandra.
My dad was a newspaper editor, and I spent probably five hours yesterday and the day before looking at this report. It's phenomenal. I was going to estimate how many words there are in it that were carefully chosen, maybe 42 bazillion. The only comment, there was one passage that I read that I didn't understand, but I can't find it, and I forgot to notate the page number, and to say that to you with the complexity of the information offered is spectacular. The only one editorial comment, I've got it's editorial, not content, is that on page 26, it talks about in early literacy and math, early learning outcomes on state and national assessments can be used to gauge learner progress. It's clear from the identity that it is being used. On the next page, it says NAEP will be used to gauge, so I think if you're going to do it, you just may want to change it to will at some point. But thank you so much for a clearly extraordinary realignment of the department, listening to the hires, the people who their backgrounds are very different. I know that there were huge issues for the department on hiring people from K-12 because of the lack of continuity for pensions and other benefits. I commend the department on being able to recruit these kinds of people because it's exactly what our schools need.
Thank you. And if you find that part of the annual review that wasn't clear, will you let me know?
It could have just been fatigue.
So we can correct it.
Yeah, it was only because I didn't understand whether it was students or teachers who were the target audience. Trust me, I couldn't find it again, so something must have clicked. Thanks.
Thank you.
Cassandra, then Richard, please.
So thank you for pulling this together. It's wonderful information, very, very helpful. I just had one area that sticks out to me, and I know I've mentioned this before, and I'll probably mention it again many, many times, but it's the competency-based learning piece of this. My fear is in education, we always have these shiny new objects, and they become like the big gold standard at the time, and then we spend all this time going into this and then find out actually that that wasn't really what we thought it was going to be. And in here, it says competency-based learning looks at how students acquire and demonstrate mastery of content by area. I'm not sure that's true. I think competency-based education is like checking off boxes, and it's not about content. And I'll give you an example. I've been checking out, because I'm a glutton for punishment, another master's program, because I want to teach part-time as well, and I don't want to teach in the area that I have a PhD in. So I've been looking at another master's program, and I decided, well, what the hey, I'll check some competency-based programs as well, because they're online and they're supposed to be less expensive. By the way, it was more expensive than Wayne State University. But when I asked the folks there about what is a competency, explain it to me, what they said is, well, you know, a competency might be you write the beginning of your paper. And then the next competency is you write the conclusion of your paper. This is a master's program. To me, that's like high school. So for that to be considered the competency was, at no point did they say demonstrate you know what you're talking about, or what is the content of this paper. It was all about can you check the box that you can write a paragraph? And so my concern as we're heading down this road of competency-based education is we want everyone to have this tailored education, which to me says computer-based, which in and of itself could be an issue as well, but that at the end of the day, what are we really measuring? Are we measuring the fact that you can write a sentence, or are we measuring the fact that you understand what it is that you wrote that sentence about? And to me, that's way more important. So I'm really concerned about this push that we have towards competency-based learning. And my question with it is, what happens, you know, when you think of competency-based education, you think about the students who want to propel forward, and why should they be in high school for four years if they can master this? Well, we never think about the students who don't propel forward. What happens What happens when they reach age nineteen and they haven't hit those quote-unquote competencies? What happens to those kids? So, I don't expect you to necessarily answer this today, but I'm going to keep expressing this as a concern because what I've seen in higher ed, I would not want translated to K-12.
I think what we'll do is maybe provide some opportunities to share with you some of the competency-based programs that are out there and show you that they're not the way you described them, but they're really about, here's what we want kids to know and be able to do, and here's how they're going through the process, and they have to demonstrate that they can do the math, the language arts, the science, the social studies. So, you raise a good point, and we'll find opportunities to show you some good programs that we think will highlight. But I also say competency-based isn't for everyone. I mean, I think what we say is we want to create multiple pathways, and I know Dexter has a program for kids can choose between a traditional classroom and a competency-based classroom, because, you know, the needs of each student is different. Good points, we'll work with you on it.
Richard, please, and then Tom.
Yes, let me echo the comments made earlier on how well put together this report is and the comprehensive plan, and I'm feeling like I can wrap my head around the top ten and ten in a way that I wasn't able to before. I had one or two questions that came up. One was in the matter of deeper learning, and specific programs like AP and STEM and STEAM were mentioned, but aren't all classes ultimately concerned with deeper learning? I mean, isn't that a philosophy that pervades instruction at all levels as opposed to being manifest primarily in certain programs or classes?
The answer to that question is yes.
Okay. On the competency-based learning, my question is, how is this assessed? Is there a manner of assessment that differs for competency-based learning that's different from traditional instruction?
So, that's a good question. I think there's, at the core of competency-based learning or education, is that it's assessment closer to the learning event. So, it's more micro-assessments, block assessments, a mix of formative assessments. I think one of the things as we move forward with certain districts who are doing competency-based, and we have an opportunity to pilot with some districts, one of the questions will be, well, what assessment supports do you need to do this more effectively? What are some of the barriers with the way we might do it now? What are you trying to do? What tools could we utilize together? So, it depends on, you know, which competency you're talking about and how you want to assess it, but it's certainly a blended approach of a child being ready to move forward. To Cassandra's point, though, students are still expected to meet grade-level standards reasonably on target. It's not, competency-based doesn't mean you end up at nineteen not able to read. It means you move forward at your own pace. So, I think it's an emerging science about how to best assess competency-based, and because it is so tailored, a one-size-fits-all approach isn't necessarily going to work. So, we look forward to working with districts that are working in that space to think how the state can support them.
Okay. On page nine, talk about teacher's support. I think that the point has to be made that the support that teachers need is primarily from the parents. And you need the support of your students' parents in the classroom, and I don't think that other institutional supports, as praised where they are necessary as they may be, can really substitute for that. I think if we fail to acknowledge that in our plan, then we're setting ourselves up for failure. So, I guess
Very good point.
I'd like to see that a little more prominent. After all this, my overall question is, well, let's go to a piddly one here, but I was very curious. Mott has an online program to teach childcare workers. How can you teach childcare skills without supervision?
That's a good question.
I mean, that's the missing ingredient in online instruction. That's why I think online schools probably should get only half the tuition and not all of it because they're only delivering half the job. Someone else is delivering the supervision. So, no thoughts on that.
I think we'll have to get back to that.
Okay, all right. And as I say, my overall question is, what, and I think it was illustrated by your observation that ninety percent of the Governor's Commission and the top ten and ten were already aligned. What percent of what we were doing five years ago is aligned with this top ten and ten plan? I guess it's a question as to how much this represents what we've already been doing and how much of it is really new.
Well, I mean, some of it is brand-new, and some of it is highlighting the best practices that have been out there in a handful of districts that the research shows has been successful, and we want other districts to learn from that. So, some of it's new, some of it is research-based that districts have done that we want to learn from, but I don't know if we can come up with a percentage or anything.
I guess I'm looking for elements of continuity, and what you've just shared is that the continuity is with what we've observed seems to be already working, and I think that makes sense.
If I can offer an observation, having kind of been here through a couple strategic plans possibly, an example might be personalized learning or the anytime, anywhere, any pace, any place, that idea. We've been working on that for several years. This plan takes certain elements, puts more specificity around it, aligns with the Governor's Commission, creates more of a focus on it, and also, the legislature, for example, made an investment into a competency-based education pilot. So, I think it's getting, taking some big ideas and starting to move into some pilots and implementation further down. So, that's a place of continuity with new development, and the field, meanwhile, has been doing their own work. So, how do we, as the department, bring in best practice and align with goals and keep moving forward? So, there are new things, there are building on foundations, there's a mix of both.
And I guess a related question, how similar or different is this plan from what other states are doing?
Well, when we came up with top ten and ten, and I know the Twenty-first Century Commission for the Governor, we looked at Massachusetts, Florida, Tennessee, and other successful countries, and I think it's very much in line with what a lot of those other states and countries who are performing very well have done. I mean, I think that's what we learned from them. So, it is aligned to them.
All right. Tom, then Michelle, please.
I had just one dog-eared page, and it happened to be what Cassandra brought up. The personalized learning, and is it a new shiny object? I'm afraid it's kind of, the flow is that it's moving in this direction, and it may be more long-term unless we really step up and challenge it. And I, you know, see more and more that it's just, I don't know, it almost makes me wonder if there's, if teachers are going to become less relevant because we're just focused on the computer and checking the box, and, you know, I've always said that it's got to be difficult when you have thirty kids, and ten of them are in the average, and ten are below and ten are above, and how do you tailor education to that? I think this might be the answer to some, is to put them in front of a computer and let the ones, you know, check boxes quicker and others check boxes slower. But I still, I wonder if we're getting away from that important teacher interaction, and, you know, there's other ways to do personalized learning. I would imagine you can kind of sort the kids about where they're at in math and move, or in a subject, and move some of them that are slower, even though they're in fourth grade, if they're in third grade math, you kind of move them without making them feel bad. You can move the fourth graders who are in fifth or sixth grade math up in a different class. I mean, I think there are other ways. This might be the easiest way, it might be the cheapest way, but I'm not sure it's the best way, and I think it might be a real problem. I think it might be a harmful way, the way that things are flowing.
Just a point of clarification, competency-based education is not synonymous with computer-based. Sometimes technology is utilized, and sometimes the programs do, but the systems, the school districts that are doing it, they've really built holistic systems. It's not, kids might not even be using computers at all, or if they are, they're using it to solve problems or to do the work. So, it is not competency-based means computer-based. It's, good competency-based education programs blend how they are using the tools to move kids forward at different paces. So, just to clarify, there is not a direct, they don't have to go together. There are, I'm sure there's programs out there who market themselves as competency-based, and they really are just a computer-based curriculum. That's not necessarily
I think that might be the intention now, but I think the easy flow is going to be to move away from that and more towards the computer. When I attended breakout sessions at the Governor's Education Gathering, one was on personalized learning, and it was all computer. It was all putting them in front of a computer and, you know, having them check boxes. So, while there are always good intentions at the beginning, I see the flow of things moving towards what's cheaper and easier, and I just have a concern about that.
And if I can piggyback on that, thank you for sharing that with us. We know that the number-one factor in student success in the classroom is the quality of the instruction provided by the teacher, and we will remember to keep that in our forefront to ensure that putting kids in front of computers and having them progress through their learning through computers does not become a replacement for high-quality instruction that the student receives. The reinforcement of that instruction certainly can occur through the use of technology. That's a tool to support learning, but the learning should occur through the interaction that the teacher has with the students in the classroom. So, thank you for bringing that forward, and we'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, I know that even in some of the high-tech areas in California, the CEOs and all, and they send their kids to schools that don't even have computers, they're not allowed to have computers. I mean, there's a real pushback, there's some looking more at the one-room school. I mean, there's just a lot of, I just want to make sure that we're not just flowing in one direction, that we're open to many different ways, whatever is best for the child. And then, the other item that I did want to bring up was data, and I saw that on page twenty-two. I just have always been concerned and will continue to talk about the amount of data that we're collecting on kids, how it's being used, whether it's secure, whether parents know and are told exactly what kind of data is being collected on their children. I think that that's, will be something that I'm wanting to watch very closely.
And I would just remind you that one of the biggest things about top ten and ten is creating multiple pathways. It isn't about creating a single pathway, it's about creating multiple pathways that students and parents can choose from. And so, that's what we, you know, that's really the premise of top ten and ten, is creating those multiple pathways.
Pathways to a job?
Nope. Pathways, could be if you know what you want to be. If you know you want to be a plumber, great. If you know you want to be a teacher, or CPA, or a policeman, great, that makes sense. If you don't know what you want to do, then that's a different pathway.
I mean, in education, I do think that there are some broad things that you want all kids to understand
Absolutely.
When they graduate.
Problem-solving.
Not kind of isolate into different pathways where they don't get certain, they don't get what certain things that the other kids do in a general education environment.
Okay. Michelle, please.
Hi. So, I really appreciate the report as well. I like the, you know, try the holistic approach, not just looking at some high-stakes testing, trying to look at other measures, and really pulling a lot of different ideas together to look at measure schools and success and provide support. So, and I, not to beat a dead horse, but I would like to say one thing. When I hear anytime, anyplace, any, whatever, any pace, I think of the EAA, and I think that that's, so that always just, because that was their mantra, the mantra of that, and I think the intentions were good, but I think, again, it shifted to, it was all about computers, it was all about having teachers be facilitators. It was, some people would say it was about some opportunities for some people to make a profit. And I think we, as, I think we all agree that that's not the way to do it, and that we need, you know, I've also seen friends of mine have taken their kids to schools like Waldorf or these more, and they look at other ways of measuring competency besides test-taking. Where kids can write a report, or do a project, because if they're not good at test-taking, how do they demonstrate that they understand? And so, I think if it's done right, but I think there are forces out there that will push to computers, and I don't necessarily think it's cheaper. I think there are, you know, there are just, I'm always leery because I think there's incentives for select few to make a profit off of this and to push it, and I think that's part of the forces we have to push back against. So, but I like the idea, I would consider the idea of looking at competency if it was done right and done in a, not just in a checking boxes and quick and dirty and more tests. So, there was three things I wanted to bring up besides, and one was, you know, there was a report recently about the NAEP scores of special ed students, and that we weren't doing very well, and I don't really understand why we didn't do well compared to other states. But I would like to understand why and like to see that incorporated in the sections around special education to address those concerns. And I would be curious if anybody knows why, or if there's any sort of understanding as to why we scored so much lower than other states on the NAEP scores.
Yes, Terry wrote a response to that, and we'll put it in board briefs.
And if there was some way to expand on what's here on page seven, it seems to me a bit limited in addressing special education. I've been working on a task force in Detroit, looking at special ed in the city, and learning a lot about some of the concerns, mostly related to funding, but the funding has a direct impact on the services. And there's just a lot of, we're generating ideas for improving that, and I may be happy to, maybe, you know, if people are aware of this, but I would be happy to work for it and help provide the information we're generating at that task force. There's a lot of really, you know, people from universities and experts in the field that are being gathered to discuss it, and I'd be happy to share that to coordinate those efforts, maybe. Then, yesterday, I went to, I was asked to come to a childcare provider, I think it's the Subcity from the state for child, so I want to learn more about the early education piece and how that's working. And they asked me to come out, and so I came out, took a tour, met with the director, assistant director, and there was, they had all, they had a number of issues and concerns with access, and, I mean, and I think it's all things that we all agree and are aware of, that the funding, they have a hard time, you know, most of the workers, they can't afford to pay them nine dollars an hour. They make less than nine dollars an hour. They don't have health benefits, and the turnover is through the roof. And then, the reimbursements that they get from the state, even though they're, you know, have several stars, doesn't meet their, the charges that they need to make ends meet. So, they're having a lot of, so it affects their ability to provide services and provide access, and they work in a fairly high-poverty area. So, I'm not, so when we talk about the access, I think we really need to try to figure out a way to make, and everybody seems to agree across, you know, across the aisle that early education is important, but there are real issues with, if it's so important, we shouldn't be paying people nine dollars an hour without benefits to deliver that service, and I think that's a real concern, and I don't know if that's necessarily in the report. I didn't notice that, but I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed. And finally, on the testing for
Bless you.
Bless you. When he talks about recruit, getting higher-quality teachers, or, you know, and relying on cuts, and raising cut scores on that, I think the idea of having and raising cut scores on the, on that, I, I think the idea of having competency-based learning should apply to that as well. So if it's, if a person's going to be a teacher and is going to teach, especially if they're going to teach in a competency-based way, in this holistic way, but then we're expecting them to be, just narrow them to the SAT and this cut score. And what I think I read in the report, we're going to hear later, that only a third pass the tests, and they have to take the test multiple times, and I think the test, the price has tripled, quadrupled of that test, right? So, teachers, we're having a hard time recruiting teachers, we're relying on tests that they have to take multiple times that have escalated in price. It seems perhaps there should be a waiver for, for people on those tests that are, especially if they're from, willing to work in a high-poverty district, or, I don't know, some, some way to, to look at people who are, would be great teachers, but not necessarily, you know, the best test creators. So, it seems sort of, you know, contradictory to me that we want to, you know, have these other ways of, of measuring success. And, and I think, and I was, again, reading in the report from Michigan Futures that the SAT and the ACT are not very reliable predictors of college completion or college persistence. GPA is much better measure for that. So, perhaps we should consider, when we're trying to recruit teachers, being a little bit more creative on that end, and also being a little more accommodating with the costs of taking these tests.
Nikki, and then Richard.
First.
Pam, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
So, it's just a huge, it's huge, so I'm, I don't want to do it soon, and I'm just going to ask, so in terms of what you're doing with the annual review, do we just refer to this throughout the year, if we talk about any given topic or number within the strategic plan?
We, we can. The purpose of the annual review is to showcase the work that was done the previous year. And then, what we do in this year is, we use the initiatives and the efforts that we started this past year as, as we move, it provides direction for moving forward.
So, I'll just kind of make some of my comments and kind of ask along the way, since we'll dig in deeper each time. But, I am to, you know, echo most of everyone's sentiment, but I am concerned, as we talk about teaching as a profession, one of the feelings I have is that relationship is so important, that we're teaching our kids relationship, they understand it, we're in relationship with each other, that's how we serve one another from any role or capacity. But, we talk about distance learning, online learning, I think that is something we need to dig into because you're removing the relationship from it, and that's a big concern of mine, so that's probably something I'll probably refer to. Along the lines, each initiative you talk about, from the perspective of financial impact on the family, on the student, I'll probably ask some questions on digging into, what's the financial impact from the state legislature, the MDE perspective? How does that impact the family, the students, as they pick a path, if they will, or don't pick a path? Financial impact is a big thing for family and students long-term, throughout the entire life, so. And then spectrum, people have talked about spectrum of learners. You talked about students with disabilities. There's a couple of, sorry, there's a couple of data points that I just want to explore through our conversations, you know, whether it's mathematics or ELA, you see a huge drop in proficiency from third grade to 11th. In language arts, you see about 5%. And now, you see a significant drop. What is that, what do we count that to, and how should we address that? And it really doesn't matter growth, so how are we tracking growth versus deficiency versus disability? And I think if we can start all understanding, you know, look better, we'll understand what we can do to increase that gap, because they know that we're really not just being able to expect these numbers. I do feel if I understand that, you know, you talk about that perspective, the end of that spectrum, the other end of that spectrum, there are students that are ready to move forward, they're ready to move forward at a different pace than everyone else. And I think that's fine, I think we need to be exploring what that looks like, so the discussion is a big thing. Anyhow, there's, there's a lot to it, so I'll just keep referring back to what you've spent a lot of time doing, and thank you.
Thank you, Pam, please.
So, I guess my question is one that I, you know, circle back to quite a bit, and I'm looking on page 30, in the, the chart of the subgroups. And it's a question that I continuously ask, I'm looking through the review and doing some comparisons, I guess, where are we with our African-American children? And I'm just surprised, like, it's not here. Kind of embarrassed because this is, and let me back up, this is a wonderful document. I think it's, it's very clear, it is easy to read, it lets us know where we are and where we're going, where we're going. So I definitely want to mention that. But I definitely think that it is indicative of what our priorities are, and I'm just surprised that African-American children are not in this, this subgroup here, being that they're one of the lower performing, and I'm going through the review chart to see, but as I pull out African-American children, I'm still seeing where they're still falling short in the proficiency across the various indicators. I'm just really surprised if that's not there.
We, we can add it to there on the online one, and it certainly is in the.
It's in the appendix, and.
Appendix, but we can add it to that.
I'll answer why, we didn't include any of the race ethnicity, just for formatting, for the space that we had on the page.
That's not a good excuse, it's something that I continue to write, so.
And it's not, we would list all of them, then?
No.
We can do that, we'll add it to the online, and like I said, it is in the appendix, so we'll add it.
I don't buy you anything at all, African-Americans continue to fall short, and so that's my reason. If, for me, if it were white, if it were any of the other ethnicities that I was seeing in the data, that I'm seeing here, I would pull that out. If we're talking about raising our, coming, raising our scores, then typically you start with those who are at the bottom, and those that we need to do the most work with. And I think the groups that you pulled out, or the subgroups down here, that are showing up on page 30, I think that they should be there. I just think that when you look at a lot of the data, you will see that African-Americans are falling shorter than some of these other subgroups, that's why I say African-Americans.
I agree, but I also wouldn't want it to be only the black population included, that it would be interpreted as singling out a subgroup.
ELLs, English learners is.
That's right, we'll address it, and it is in the appendix. What else you got, Pam?
I think that's it, and I, and all many of the other comments.
Okay. We can address that, and then Richard, please.
Well, the good news on page 29 is that 98% of our teachers are effective. And as you said, the most important factor for a student's performance is an effective teacher. Now, if we had scored 98% on, on a NAEP test or something like that, we'd be crowing and telling everyone. The fact that we're not really celebrating this is a sign that the department itself doesn't regard this as a particularly trustworthy measure. It's an interesting contrast, 98% of our teachers are effective, and yet, the next topic is equity, and whether kids in economically-depressed districts have the same access to effective What are we doing to get a more realistic or credible measure of teacher effectiveness going forward?
I think we all agree that the 98% effective teachers doesn't line up with the data in terms of performance, and that's why we're doing a lot of work in terms of working with districts on how to appropriately implement teacher evaluation programs. We talked about, there's 95, or, we have staff that works with ISDs in local districts on trying to improve their evaluation, and more work is to come, because I think these are the numbers as they're currently reported, but I think I would challenge that those don't line up with the performance, and so we've got an issue there that needs to be addressed.
And if I may add, it would be interesting to see data at some point comparing the self-evaluation or district evaluation, the source of these evaluations, the performance data, and measure that against the traditional view of tenure, or just years of service. The old assumption was that the longer you'd been teaching, the more effective you were. It would be interesting to see how that lines up with the self-evaluation and with the other measures of effectiveness that we have.
We can see if we can get that.
Thank you.
Yes, Michelle, please.
The study that talks about the most influential factor, the OECD study, had economic status as being a far greater influence on these test scores. So, which is what teachers are generally evaluated on. And also, we have laws that say if they're rated ineffective, what, two years in a row? They're going to be fired. So, that is bad policy in my book, which is going to create an incentive to, and there's a teacher shortage in many areas. So, I think, given those factors, you know, it's not surprising that this is the result, because people are, it's, it's just too high stakes, and it's also, there's a 50% turnover or more of teachers in the first five years. So, there's a lot of weeding out of teachers in the first five years, self-weeding out as they leave the profession for whatever reason. So, I, I wouldn't want to, I think focusing on this effective, ineffective teachers as being the be-all, end-all is a big mistake, because there are factors that influence the outcome on test scores that are well beyond the teacher's ability to deal with.
Pam, please.
One of the questions that I have, and maybe we might have mentioned this as we're talking about teachers, educators, is that we have students that will show up this fall that may not have educators at all. We know in the past, we've had kids who have been herded into gymnasiums and waiting for a teacher to show up. So how is that reflected in here? And.
And it isn't, right now. But certainly, we can provide that information.
Well, now Sheila said, the report reflects work we've done in the last year. So, I think your question is work going forward, so how are we, how are we gearing up to help our partnership districts be ready to address their shortages and their workforce issues? And so we've begun work with those districts, for example, knowing that they need to get bodies and good, ready people in classrooms to teach kids, and that that's a unique challenge, particularly in districts that have a lot of challenges, so.
And that's another reason why I've been having African-American children, I think in a lot of these districts, you will see that that may be an issue versus it just being an economically disadvantaged district, but I would like to measure that, help to measure the impact of that as well.
Thank you, Pam. All right, we are going to move on. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is presentation on K3 components of quality for classroom environments. The document covers the context and environment in which children learn. The purpose is to, one, create a shared vocabulary supporting K3 quality, and, two, foster conversations among administrators, teachers, and parents about policies and practices that promote high-quality classroom environments. The next step is, following a period of public comment, the board will be asked to consider approval at its October 10th meeting. Presenters today are Richard Lauer, Director of Preschool and Out-of-School Time Learning, Emily Hook, Research to Practice Consulting, and Nancy Sherbrooke, Clinton County RISA Office of Innovative Projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Emily Hook is on the end here, Nancy Sherbrooke, and myself.
Good morning.
So, the purpose that we embarked on this process over the last 18 months or so was really to establish a document that provides the field with some level of guidance and framework for understanding the non-academic aspects of a learning environment that contribute to outcomes both academic and non-academic, and what those components and competencies are of a high-quality education in an early elementary setting. It's really based on over two decades' worth of research and evidence supporting best practices in the early elementary years. The work here is to help early elementary field better understand the critical components of successful learning for kindergarteners, first and second, third graders, and to support implementation of policies and practices in those settings to promote high-quality classroom environments. This was really started at the request of the field, in particular, where I, every summer into fall, I received calls from kindergarten teachers in particular, who are asking for some direction, some context from the department, and understanding and helping to educate their elementary building peers, as well as their administrators, on what does a good context of an early elementary classroom look like? And so, this is several years in the making, but, you know, it's at the request of the field that we started this work, and there is some history as well for leadership that the board has had over the decades. Why is this important? It's been actually said several times in the prior conversation about positive relationships and quality learning experience are essential for student success, both academically and non-academically, in all areas of development, and that experiencing a quality education is vital to the future of their success, not only short-term in the elementary years, but long-term through high-school graduation and beyond. And the learning environment is one of those pieces that does not get enough attention, the context in which a child learns, from my point of view. And so this is meant to fill that gap of understanding and information. It absolutely aligns with the state's top-ten and ten strategic goals, in particular, strategy 1.4, ensuring that the control system has aligned expectations and outcomes that transition Michigan's children between the various stages of their education and development. And the work is important to promote the lifelong learning and success of the children. So I'm going to turn it over at this point to Nancy. These are our partners that I brought on with Lean Resources, we've achieved a lot through consultation with partners in the field, as well as being able to facilitate a larger stakeholder group.
Good morning, anyone, everyone. The first question to ask, is there anything like this in place already? And in short, the answer is no. There is a document that is, I have with me, a 1992 document, that looked at pre-kindergarten through second grade. This would be the, the only document, really, that was in place, because about 10 years after this was published, the state board received a report from the task force on ensuring early childhood literacy that recommended something be provided that would focus on children ages three and four. So, that report was approved and accepted, and so as part of that report, they put together a commission that would create early childhood standards of quality, which is this document, and actually, one was brought before you in 2005, and then a revised version, which is this one, was brought in 2013. Really focusing on the pre-kindergarten years, but not the kindergarten through third-grade years. In 2013, the Office of Great Start had intended to reestablish the work for K3 with some ARA funding, however, it wasn't completed. There was a draft done, but the work in and of itself wasn't completed. So therefore, Michigan doesn't have anything, and there isn't a lot in any other states either. We had noticed as we were looking through different, as we were doing our research, there wasn't a lot available for early elementary staff that was comprehensive related to the learning environments. So, what are the K3 components of quality? And I believe you all have the document, if you have a chance to look through and look in, anyway, that is what we're going to do. This document is a resource document. It is for elementary administrators and teachers to promote policies and practices that are developmentally appropriate. that are developmentally appropriate. It does represent the most up-to-date viewpoints in research of the experts in the field at this time. And the creators of this document really spent a lot of time and were committed to making sure that we use solid research and evidence-based in writing the documents. We wanted to make sure we had the most up-to-date available information out there in this particular So we had a large group of stakeholders represented in this process over the last year and a half or so. They included a number of teachers, administrators. We had representatives from advocacy organizations, professional development entities, researchers, university personnel, and a number of colleagues here from the Department of Education representing different offices. We had a national expert panel that we used as reviewers after we completed our initial draft. They included colleagues from the Education Commission on the States, several universities that we contacted, colleagues from the New Jersey Office of Educational and the National Association for the Education of Young Children, excuse me, the New Jersey Department of Education, they were very helpful, and also researchers at the University of Washington. And so to go through our timeline, we started in November 2015 with our state stakeholder group. We brought them all together. We looked at the draft that was created, that was done at the end of 2013, and divided it up into sections and small groups, looking at that particular draft. And the idea was that we would review the draft and edit it and bring it up to date and then bring it here. In the two months between the first meeting and our second meeting in January, it was realized that we probably wanted to do a little bit more than just review, and we wanted to look at the document's construction. We wanted to make sure that relevant, up-to-date research was involved. So in that particular process, we decided to reorganize how we had started the project and pulled together a smaller group, we called them a developer or writing group, to really focus on the overall document. It was large enough that looking at it in pieces wasn't making sense to everyone. They would ask questions like, is that covered someplace else? Does it need to be covered here? Or I think that really should go here and not someplace else. And so it was really challenging to be able to do all those pieces. So we established a smaller group of developers, which consisted of teachers, administrators, researchers, and MDE personnel. And this smaller group spent about one day a month through March to December, and when I say a day, I mean about two hours, anywhere from two hours to a full day, looking at the document, discussing the components, looking at research, cross-referencing between the NEYDC, which is the National Association for the Education of Young Children, and Division for Early Childhood, and other national documents that talk about best practice, and seeing where is that in our document and can we cite those particular pieces? And once we came down to a product that we felt was comprehensive enough but not duplicative, we forwarded it on to the review groups that we had established. So in December 2016 through January 2017, we sent it out to our national experts to review and to give feedback on the draft. And we received their feedback back and took their feedback and the draft and brought the full stakeholder group together. The reviewers and the developers were together. So the developers could walk through the process and how they came to where they did, and the reviewers had time to look at everything that had been done and provide comment on it. And then we took all of the comments back, and in May 2017, the reviewer group went through all of the comments and made changes based on all of those comments. We sent this draft out to the stakeholders within our state again and asked for further feedback. And then the version you have here is the latest version based on all of that feedback. So like I said, this product is a resource document to encourage and support policy and practices for implementation that is high-quality for all elementary classrooms and buildings across our state. It's a very solid product, and it represents the best thinking of everyone in the group and the research in the field at the time. And some guidelines that we developed and had the writer group follow really were to look at the whole child or student, not to write for special populations, to make sure that you're taking a holistic approach to the classroom environment when we're educating children in kindergarten through third grade. We also wanted to avoid jargon and specific models and intervention. If we were to include specific models or interventions in this particular document, our concern was it would be dated. You would see something that maybe is very up-to-date and very current now, that's the latest flavor of the month, to use something that has already been said here today, and that particular flavor may be gone in three years from now. And we really wanted this document to stand the test of time at least longer than that. So we wanted to avoid that. We wanted to highlight expectations and describe the elements that were necessary for the understanding. Elements in this case are the indicators. The indicators are used as examples, not necessarily as a checklist. And just as we encourage teachers to integrate things into their curriculum, we have worked to overlap this guidance with existing guidance and materials that are already available. And this was one thing that I know the developer group struggled with quite a bit. They wanted to make sure that anything that was in here related to curriculum, teaching practices, student assessment, wasn't in another document, but was specifically related to the environment of the classroom. So that was something that was spent a lot of time on and discussion over a couple of different meetings. We wanted to make sure that the illustrative examples are, that the illustration of the examples are really indicators and not used as a checklist. I know I mentioned that once, but I think it's important to reiterate because I know that teachers in the field do ask for checklists. How can I, what checklist can I use to make sure my environment is high-quality? And we didn't write the indicators to be that. We wanted them to be used as examples. And then we also made sure that everything that is in there is based in research and best practice, and Appendix B has a detailed reference list to the work that we used. So what are the components of quality? There are 26 individual components of quality based around these nine domains that are listed, and they represent the critical areas for quality of a classroom environment. One, mission, vision, beliefs, and guiding principles. Two, community collaboration. Three, family engagement. Four, transitioning to kindergarten. Five, learning environments. Six, teaching practices. Seven, qualifications and professional development. Eight, curriculum. And nine, student assessment and intervention. Just want to make one note here. The only one, the only indicator, or not, I'm sorry, the only component that we didn't have consensus on was under number four, transitioning to kindergarten. And this is regarding the age entry into kindergarten on page 17. And if there are questions about that, we can address that after the presentation. But we did leave it the way it was and wanted to get public comment on it, so. The example of a component in family engagement, Component C. The component itself says that K3 leadership and staff provide a range of authentic, developmentally appropriate, in and out-of-school parent engagement opportunities. In this particular competency, authentic means genuine, that parents engage genuinely and are interested in what's going on in school, and continue that particular learning outside with things that are relevant to their daily life. So the indicators that we use as examples to that is home learning opportunities are encouraged as an extension of the school day, as opposed to the expectation that parents help to reteach the daily lesson plan or complete unfinished daily work. Really, our hope is that teachers can give parents things to do that really are rooted in what parents are already doing, that extend the learning, so that there's learning happening in school and learning happening at home, and that those two are relevant and useful for kids. The second one, research about effective collaboration and family engagement is continually reviewed, and families are provided effective learning opportunities at home that align with the research. And the third one, respect and acknowledgement is given for the need to balance family time and school-related activities, particularly as it relates to homework and family learning opportunities. So that family time is respected and that we're actually encouraging families to do things together and not spend the whole night doing worksheets and different things like that because that, we have, it doesn't foster learning as well as spending time together. So our next steps, today we're here presenting this to all of you, and we'll put it out for public comment. We'll accept public comment from the day it goes out, this afternoon or tomorrow, whenever that is, and then through till September 13, 2017. We will compile and evaluate all of the comments and make changes as needed. You will see us back here again, October 10, 2017, for another review, and then we will ask for approval of the revised document based on public comment.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Z. Tom, after Dr. Z.
All right. On page 17 of the document, let's see, competency, gated, three leadership staff guarantee, entrance into kindergarten solely by meeting the state-defined kindergarten entry age eligibility requirement without exception. Indicator one, students not excluded from school or placed in extra-year programs such as developmental kindergarten, beginning, beginner garden, or young fives based on age, gender, culture, ethnicity, economic factors, specialty, use of language, participation in early childhood programs, delayed or cognitive development, delayed growth or fine motor skills, or delayed social and emotional development. Where does this come from?
So this is an ongoing debate for several decades around the issue of red-shirting children prior to kindergarten entry based on descriptors or characteristics of children rather than their actual abilities and skill set. And it complements with the current work on the multi-tiered systems work where we differentiate learning based on where the child or student is and taking them from, and giving them additional support within a particular domain rather than holding the child back a full grade prior to even the first year of kindergarten. And so this was the item that Nancy mentioned, was the point of disagreement in the stakeholder group related to developmental kindergarten versus kindergarten. And this has been an ongoing piece since the, for decades, as I said, but it really started with getting some attention when Prop A was developed, when there was no distinction between developmental kindergarten and kindergarten, from a fiscal or policy point of view. And then in 2012, the legislature worked along to differentiate the fiscal aspect of it, to say that half-day kindergartens or developmental kindergartens were getting funded at the same full per pupil allowance as kindergarten, and that needed to be shored up to a percentage per-rated basis, that you need to go for a full day in order to get a full foundation allowance. So from a fiscal point of view, there's been some work and some advancement. On a policy point of view, the debate continues on whether or not it is a good practice to, for children in particular, who have fall birth dates from September 2 through December 1, under the current law, to put them into developmental kindergarten for a year as a planned two-year sequence of kindergarten before they go on to first grade? Or should the children be put in with their age cohort into kindergarten, decide whether or not have them go through, have them get an appropriate tiered approach to intervention based on their performance? And then truly, if they are not ready for kindergarten, then they can repeat as a true retention of kindergarten. This is a topic that Governor Snyder actually raised in his 2013 State of the State, I believe it was, when he announced that over 14,000 kindergartens would be retained every year. And we've worked with SEPI to at least disaggregate the data at kindergarten to show what is the true retention of children who've gone through kindergarten in the year immediate prior to first grade and need to repeat versus those who are in a planned two-year sequence, which is developmental kindergarten or whatever name plus kindergarten. And it breaks out that 14,000 into about 12,500 are a planned two-year sequence. The rest are the true retention, which is on par with every other grade in the elementary years. It just, it's a misrepresentation somewhat if you put them all together aggregate-wise. So what, the reason why we wanted to leave this language in there is to see what the broader community really thinks of this topic because we have a debate going on in the field around this between early childhood and K-12.
And the other pieces, there's a couple of different research articles that we found that show that there is no evidence that kids do better over the long haul in having two years of kindergarten. And those reference articles, on page 36, the Hanover Research Article, and then the one right underneath it, both speak to kindergarten readiness and the start age, and that the research is saying that there isn't, we find no evidence that a policy of great retention in kindergarten improves average achievement in math or reading. So that was another reason why we left it in there, so we could have the open conversation about it.
All right, Tom, please.
Then, may I just-
Sorry, Dr. Z.
May I just observe that that research would be of a piece with other research that shows that head start has no lasting effects. So I guess ideologically, we have to decide which implications are we going to use as the basis for policy. This does seem to me to be the sort of thing that perhaps could be left to local districts or programs as to how they want to structure. Candidly, I red-shirted three out of four of my kids and regret I didn't do it with the fourth. And there's just a lot of advantages to being older and having an extra 20% of language development and physically larger and so on and so forth. So I think that if it is an area of controversy, perhaps it could be left to local districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Z. Tom, please.
Thank you. I was looking at the folks that were on this group that prepared this, and I didn't, there were a couple retired teachers. I didn't see, was that the, there were two former teachers? Is that the extent of the number of teachers that were involved?
We had an administrator and teacher from the DeWitt Public Schools who joined us. The idea behind having the retired teachers is that the meetings initially were going to take place during the school day, during the school year. And as the process extended itself, we added Beth Whaley from DeWitt Public Schools, who's teacher administrator.
Okay. I mean, I just, I would prefer to hear more about how the rubber meets the road and how, you know, teachers view these kind of things. I was in a meeting with a couple of my colleagues, and we heard from kindergarten teachers and early childhood teachers, and they just said that they really don't have the ability to teach. They are just checking boxes about making sure that all the granular items that they have to get to because of a high-stakes test coming up or whatever. And, you know, they, I think they would have had a lot of pushback in what is a quality classroom environment.
So I'd like to make one more, if I can correct myself. Michelle Berg was on the committee. She is an administrator and I believe also a teacher, has been a teacher in the K-2 environment. And through both Mickey Berg and also through Brandy Mendham from Zealand Public Schools, we were able to push down to a number of their teachers and get feedback. Brandy was part, Brandy and Michelle were both part of the developers group. So every time we did an area of development, they went back and talked to some of their administrators. But I think we agree with you, even talking to some of the retired teachers, we'd like more feedback from the field about some of those-
We can make sure that happens during the public comment.
Well, that was one of my, how can you make sure that particularly K3 teachers are, you know, really looking at this? I mean, are we going to aggressively try to seek their feedback? And how would we do that? How is that going to be done?
The advocacy associations that have been a part of the work all along have committed to highlighting it as it goes out for public comment. A number of them have already worked with us and did provide us comments when we went out for the comment period in May of this year. So that is part of what we were trying to do. We put it out through our networks. We put it out through our networks. It'll be on the website.
I'll also make sure MEA and AFT get it and encourage them to have their teachers, early childhood teachers, look at it.
I mean, is this, is this the kind of thing that, you know, are all K-3 classrooms the same throughout the state? I mean, are there, you know, I went to one of the failing schools that, or one of the quote-unquote failing that the state says is failing. I'm not sure that they were at all. And, you know, their second graders are walking a mile to school in the dark, you know, in Detroit. You know, I don't know what kind of, I don't know what that would be like to have those children that are having to deal with that kind of, or who knows what else is being dealt with. You know, I just would imagine that it's difficult to try to broad, you know, to say that all kindergarten through three classrooms are gonna look like this. I just, that's just a separate. How much intervention, how much unstructured, does this get into unstructured play and things like that? I mean, you know, I know that that's important. I also have seen presentations about interventions with kindergarteners and pulling them out, and, you know, I just wonder about how far we get to this whole pressure on children and whether they're failing. I've seen kindergarteners crying because they've been told they're failing in reading or failing somewhere. You know, I mean, how do we, and I know people like Diane Ravitch and others, and this is a, you know, a topic that I know has some differences, but like Diane says, the common core and what it expects from young kids is very developmentally inappropriate, and other, I've heard child psychiatrists, psychologists say the same thing. You know, feedback, when you're in first grade, you may not be able to take negative feedback very well from your, you know, and if that's something that's being encouraged, that may be problematic for children. So, I just, you know, I wonder about unstructured play, I wonder about intervention, these type of interventions for children or kindergarteners, first graders, and also just the process. I'm kind of learning here the process. We got a topic coming up in a little bit, and I might have pushback, and maybe that wasn't the time for pushback is when it comes back in October. Is it pushback now? Do we, as a board, supposed to change and have an impact on what goes out for comment? And if we don't, then when it comes back to us, if there's a lot, if we have substantive issues, we haven't heard from the public on those things, and we just change it. And do you send it back out if it's substantial changes? I guess I'm a little, so there's a lot there that I ask, you can feel free to pick whatever you want there, but.
I think if there's things that you wish us to change, you should let us know that now before we go out for public comment.
And then hold it up and not go out right now?
Well, we'd go out once you gave us your feedback, yes. Eileen, please.
More on what Tom just said. I think that the role of the state board about which is to find, help find the sweet spot between professional direction based on research and knowledge of the state, but then having that presented, right now, you come to us. This is all presentations, not you, I'm not singling you, but we get great presentations. It goes out to, for public comment, and then we get a document back on which we can't tell what's been changed. And I think that what I've been hearing a little bit is, where's the public comment? Is there a way to find out what the public comment was, the tone of it, so that we're not feeling ambushed the second time you present it by changes that we can't discern and people still feeling unsettled in the field? I'd say that in the last, I've been on this board now for an additional six years, and the difference between the first time and this time, in the last two or three years, where voters are able to access information, which we want them to do, but they're, because of the internet, they're researching in ways that, they're directing themselves to sites that have nothing to do with how you put this together, and they have anxieties that we hear about and we can't resolve. So, I would ask if there's a way to either do three presentations, one initially, and then another one on what changes are being contemplated, and then a vote the following month, or giving us public comment, a summary of it as you rewrite the document so that we can see the tone and we understand what the proposals are. I don't want to slow down the work of the department, but there is this political filter, and we are statewide elected, and that's our voice and our role.
Sure. Makes sense.
So, we will be collecting public comment through a survey function, Survey Monkey is what we utilize. And so, we will be able to download every, and we have an unlimited text for them to be able to put their comments in. And we have a way to download data so that it gives the full representation of every comment. It can be done anonymously, or it can be done with identification. That's a variable based on the commenter. And that entire document can be provided to you with all the comments, pros and cons, that come from the field. And then the document, as it's getting reflected upon based on the comment, that can be done in a variety of ways. One, it can be done in track changes to showcase, rather than a summary of general themes. It can be done very specifically at that granular level to show you exactly where in the document there were changes based on public comment versus more of the narrative, because I've seen both kinds over the years as well. And so, I'm more than willing to provide that level as we move through this process.
All right. Cassandra, please, then. Michelle.
What is the date that this is out for public comment?
We were going to release it this week as of Thursday's MB communication.
And then it ends when?
September 13th.
Okay. So, given the fact that we're in summer break right now, where most teachers are, what is the likelihood that we'll get a lot of teacher responses at this particular timeframe?
This is where we believe that late August, first two weeks of September absolutely are the transition period back into the school, and this would be fresh to, at the top of the list, you know, a top of the awareness for the teaching population and elementary administrators to be able to see. And so, that's why we chose that timeframe. We can amend it to go later if we are going to get guidance to amend and push into a three, a three-phase approach to this. We can always move it later into September, and then we wouldn't come in October, we may come in November or December with a final document.
Michelle, please.
I'm just, I'm wondering if there are shifts of focus groups, or even there's that, teachers from across the state that's been brought together. I wonder if there's some early elementary teachers that have been brought in as part of the charge to give some direct review from your point of view, how would we, and I assume that there's teachers that come from different areas of the state, so maybe they would, it would address some of the concerns Tom brought up of teachers from different areas that might have, you know, their community might be different, it might, they might need, have different points of view on how, you know, on how to improve it or what they foresee as concerns. So, I always find direct dialogue with a group of people focusing on the document who are gonna be involved and actively implementing that is really non-inflammation.
Nice, Tom.
Yes, Tom?
Actually, you know, my question about unstructured play and interventions in kindergarten really didn't get addressed. I'd like to hear that.
Sure.
And just the unintended consequences of high-stakes testing or even testing at a young age, and, you know, how is that, I mean, I think that really affects the quality of the classroom. And, you know, I mean, is there, was there a dissenting opinion? You said there was one, you know, where there's, I guess I don't know, did everybody vote yea on this that was on your little group? Or were there some that, you know, were quite troubled by some of the parts or that some were, things weren't added?
The major issue was the developmental kindergarten, kindergarten issue that was a point of contention. Otherwise, we used the general consensus of the group, and no one voiced anything beyond the kindergarten discussion. There was general consensus with no extreme objections to anything else that was put in the other areas. The unstructured play piece, where play-based learning, experience, adult-child interaction happens within component five, the learning environment. And it is where we speak to the broad strokes of philosophy of how the environment should be child-driven, student-driven in terms of their learning. It's not prescribed and scripted in that environment. And that's where we address the issue of definitely having a minimum of at least one session, that's 45 minutes for active, non-structured play and activities that aligns with the research in American Academy of Pediatrics and other national groups.
I guess the, you know, and it just occurred to me also that, you know, the retired teachers were fine, and even the ones that had, but from what I'm hearing, from what our, at our meeting anyway, the fact that now tenure has been changed and third-grade reading is there, that, that things have changed, and the teacher evaluation process, state top-down, that things have changed dramatically in the last couple of years where retired teachers in K-3 or even those that have been there may not understand the weight of what's going on now. And I don't know if this is ready. I mean, I would have, I would think that it would be better to have several current teachers that are under the, I'm thinking of the ones that I heard from that said, "I can't teach the way I want anymore." The, you know, and I think some of it is perceived what the state, because of the third-grade reading and holding them back and all that. Some of it's perceived, some of it's district-imposed and not state-imposed, and it's based on perceptions. And I just wonder if there's a, if this document needs to be more cognizant of the current environment that has been placed on some of the K-3 teachers in a way that their ability to teach has dramatically changed.
So, we'll work with the team to make sure that we won't go out for public comment now. We will make sure we have a process in place to get teachers to give input, and then we'll bring it back to the board. So, yeah, we'll do that. And then, Tom, you know, testing's required by law, so none of us like, well, I don't know about none. Most of us don't like testing in the early grades, but it is required by law, so we'd love your help in getting that changed.
Well, but I think that this is a document that might help make that change if we do it right, in that if it's acknowledged the detriment that is going on with policy changes in this document, that might be helpful to making changes.
And to answer your question about assessment, student assessment component is discussed on page 26, and we do advocate and promote a balanced assessment, which takes all information across all different areas and from parents to see where the child is at. So, it's not a test, it's within the realm of what the teachers are already doing. So, just wanted to address that, because I know you had asked about that.
I mean, this is real important stuff, like Young Zhao that I brought in in February. You know, I mean, this is, how quickly do we kill creativity in kids? When I've gone to these quote-unquote failing schools and their first-grade classes, those kids are bouncing off the wall with all kind of creativity. They're just, I don't think they're any different than kids in Birmingham and everywhere else, but it's just how quickly the system that is, you know, kind of a cookie cutter, you know, how quickly it kills their creativity. And I just, this is important stuff, that's all I'm saying.
Nikki, and then Michelle, please.
Can we have a physical copy of it? Is that possible?
I'm sorry?
Do you want the physical copy?
Can you print it off? Do they have physical copies of it?
We can print one.
Yeah.
Yep. Michelle, please.
Yeah, and I was with Tom when we met with some of the, some of the teachers in a number of them were early education. One of them said there was a 68-point, obviously, they have to observe, they have like 18 kids, 68 data, they had to record on each child twice a year. And they asked if that could be consolidated to, because that, you know, I think what happens is, a lot of people have ideas of what they think should be measured, but then the practitioner, then it comes down to the practitioner, and then it's overwhelming. So, and it gets to the point, so I, and maybe you're aware of that, and so there's, so, you know, talking, and again, I'm talking to more early education providers, pre-K and Is there, and I know we, in the top 10 of 10, they talk about having some feedback loops. So, if, in an ongoing way, even after there is something passed and things get implemented and there's some unintended consequences, how do those people, and, you know, is there a professional organization for these early childcare providers? Is there some group that they can belong to to maybe voice in a, you know, comprehensive way what some of their concerns are with some of this? Because I, when I'm talking, you know, I know that, you know, there's AFT and K-3, but in the early, I'm wondering if there's a group, if the department could be involved in forming a group to provide ongoing feedback of how these policies are actually hitting the ground and to tweak them, improve them, you know, based on that feedback.
The current group that covers birth through age eight, which includes the K-3, is the Michigan Association for the Education of Young Children. They're the statewide professional group that can represent across the spectrum of early care and education providers, teachers as well.
Okay.
And that, and that group was part of this process.
People I, I haven't talked to a huge group, but they weren't aware of it. So, they're visible, and they have offices in southeast Michigan as well.
They're a statewide organization housed in Lansing, but they have regional affiliates all throughout the state of Michigan, so there is one in southeast Michigan as well.
Same name?
Yes, it would be the southeast.
Southwest or southeast?
Southeast Michigan Association for Education.
Metro Detroit.
Yeah, Metro Detroit, something like that.
All right. Thank you very much. So, we'll work on the process to get some more teacher input, and we'll bring it back.
Okay.
All right. So, we are going to move Transparency Dashboard for this afternoon, because we're running extremely behind, and we have some people waiting for us. So, Item D is the next item on the committee, the whole agenda discussion regarding criteria for grant programs. Yes?
Okay. So, criteria for Project Search Grants. First of all, is this federal money or state money?
Is Louie in the room? Bow.
It's federal money.
It's federal.
Title I is federal.
Okay. Is it earmarked specifically for this particular program?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's interesting, because I'm wondering if the U.S. Department of Education talks to the IRS, because the IRS has been kind of frowning on uncompensated labor. And in this case, it looks like the $100,000 goes to the, whoever's.
Those are intermediate schools.
The intermediate school district. And then the intermediate school district links the students up with state entities that they can intern in?
The funding is to pay for ISD to hire staff to do that coordination.
Okay. But the students don't get any of this money?
That's not what the grant purpose is for.
Okay. All right. Those are my questions.
It's dollars that are appropriated and.
Oh, it's Health and Human Services. They should talk to the IRS.
Any other questions on grant criteria? All right. Time is now 11:40, and a quorum of the board is present. The Board of Education meeting of August 8, 17 is called to order of the regular meeting. We're gonna vote to convene in a closed session to discuss memorandum of legal advice regarding Open Meetings Act with counsel. Before we break for lunch, I'll entertain a motion to convene this closed session.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Marilyn, please call a roll call.
Fecto? Yes. McMillan?
Yes.
Pugh? Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Wiser?
Yes.
Siley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So, we'll come back at 1:00.